Good evening and welcome to the Greenfield School Committee meeting for Wednesday, March 12th, 2025. This meeting is being recorded by Greenfield Community Television, GCTV. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify the chairperson at this Not seeing any. Secretary Geneva, will you call the roll?
All right. Member Goodwin?
Here.
Member Childs?
Here.
Secretary Geneva, I'm here. Chair Johnson Mossad?
Here.
Vice Chair Sexton?
Here.
Member Martini?
Here.
Mayor Disorder?
Here.
We are all present at the corner.
At 6:32, we call the meeting to order. We'll begin with public comment. We'll start with people in the room. People on Zoom, if you would like to make public comment, please put a note in the chat and we'll call on you when we get to the Zoom public comment members.
Hello? Jesus Slava, 88 Deerfield Street, Greenfield. Forgot for a moment. I'm here tonight for public comment to let you know that on March 24th, Monday, at 11:00 a.m., there will be a state Ways and Means budget hearing on local aid. And the state has started to hold these kinds of hearings, not just in Boston, but sometimes locally. This one happens to be at UMass. So this is a rare opportunity to actually be able to show up in person. It is an invitation-only hearing as in terms of public comment, so there is no public comment allowed. The one that will have public comment will probably be across the state, but that's just the way things go. However, the one of the principals of in Amherst has decided to make this particular hearing a day of civic awareness and action. I share, I shared with you a letter that he's, that the principal sent out to parents and teachers about this, where they actually planned to walk from a school in Amherst to the campus on UMass so that they could show up at the hearing. And there are groups in North Hampton that are planning on organizing and doing the same. If Greenfield is to have some kind of presence at that meeting, it has to be incumbent upon our civic leaders here in Greenfield to do the same. So I'm just presenting what they're doing and hoping that there is someone here who might take some leadership on that idea. On a, and a general note about the state funding advocacy, we are still looking to try to get the state to take greater responsibility for charter school funding. There are several bills pending. The one that is most well-supported is unfortunately the one that is not going to bring us as much relief as we would hope. And as far as the most popular idea statewide for the funding advocacy, the one that would help Greenfield the most is fixing the Chapter 70 inflation factor. So in the absence of actually being able to have a conversation about state funding equity, that would be what we would want to support. That and Senate Bill 1912, which looks to, which is sponsored by Senator Commerford and Senator Lewis, which would look at reforming the Chapter 70 funding formula so that it is more equitable. Is that, is that the end of public comment for me? Sorry. Thank you.
Marguerite Riancourt, 19 B Street, Greenfield. I have been teaching in Greenfield since 1996, and I'm here to talk about our superintendent, Karen Patnau. I have never met anybody who has worked harder to meet her mission, which I believe is to meet the needs of all of our students, to provide them the best educational experience that we can provide them. She doesn't just talk the talk, she walks the walk. If we're at school at a night event, she's there. If we're setting up to do the Seussical practice, she's there helping us. She's there at the performance. But what I really want to talk about is her budget. She did not make that lightheartedly or frivolously. She made it with one intent, to provide our students with what they deserve to have. And if you don't believe me, you need to look at that budget. Because Member Sexton touched upon it at the budget meeting, but what was not said was she gave herself a $15,000 salary decrease. She did that, I believe, because she's trying to meet the needs of our students. I have not seen anybody do that in my life. We all need to acknowledge you, Karen, are working for us. All of us feel it. The staff feels her support, the students and the families. So when we start looking at this budget, because I'm worried about what's going to happen, people need to be aware. It was not made lightheartedly, and it was made with one intent, to provide our students the best education they deserve. So please, when you're talking about this, please look at that. I have not met anybody who was willing to give themselves a $15,000 year decrease in their salary. So I want to thank you, Karen, for all that you do for us. And since I probably have time, I want to talk about the Seussical. If you did not get to see our fourth graders perform in the Seussical, you missed something special. And the only reason it happened is because of you. Yes, Jaduke, we have to thank them. And we have to thank Sarah Page and Eli Whit, Lit, 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 I can't, sorry. Litwin, sorry. Because they also worked hard, but none of it would have happened without Karen. She saw this opportunity, and it was amazing. It was amazing. If you saw me backstage, I was sobbing like a baby because I was so proud. It was a once-in-a-lifetime experience for many of our students, and you did that work to make sure it happened for all of our fourth graders at all three schools. You do that every day, and I appreciate you. And I think the city of Greenfield should recognize all that you do for us.
Rose, followed by Autumn. I hope I'm not that tall. Hi, I'm Rose Skorloff. I live on Linden Avenue. I'm a teacher in the district, and I love what I do. I really look forward to coming to work every day, and I wouldn't want to be anywhere else. I've been watching the various GZTV videos that lay out the current conflict between the school committee and the city council. And I wanted to share my perspective as a teacher, as teachers navigate interpersonal conflicts with students on a daily basis, and this work feels applicable here. So as a teacher, I'm often in a position where students perceive my actions in a different way than I intend, and that's just the reality of adults working with kids. They have a very different view of, and we just sometimes clash. And when my impact doesn't match my intent, and students communicate with me that they are hurt by my actions, I have two options. I can prove myself right and justify my actions, or I can listen without judgment and work to repair the harm that I caused, even if I didn't mean to cause it. As a teacher, when a student requests information from me that I do not think they have any right to ask me about, I have two options, to shut them down or to have a curious conversation and ask why they need it. As a teacher, when a student doesn't understand something that I am trying to get across, it is my job and my responsibility to work as best as I can within my means to clarify that information and not to shame them for their misunderstanding. I also have to ask myself in those moments if it is appropriate for me to address the concern in front of the class, if I'm having a conflict with a student, or to have an offline conversation about it. I have to evaluate the situation and decide if this is a time where the student will be able to receive the information that I am trying to convey. So we're not very different in that respect. And as school committee members, I believe there is a responsibility to address harm and restore relationships, and for that to take precedent over being right. I hope that, as you all discussed, budget lines that affect our lives as teachers, as students, as parents, as families, that you can either restore those relationships before making decisions, or take your feelings out of it to make decisions that are in the best interest of everyone in our community. Because I know that that's the, the mission, right? School committee, city council, teachers, we all want what's best for everyone in Greenfield. So we have to make sure that we are all understanding that and we're on the same side instead of being on different sides. Thank you.
So I've never done this before. I'm taking, I'm supposed to say my address? Yeah? Okay.
Don't have to say your address. I think it's just the town.
Town, okay. All right. So my name is Autumn Mercier, and I'm a resident of Greenfield. I'm also a mom to an amazing fourth grader at Four Corners Discovery School. I wanted to comment on the district's recent collaboration with Jaduke in presenting the Seussical at the Greenfield High School. I'm not sure how many of you had the privilege of seeing this performance, but all of the students were beaming, and the auditorium was full of families. Our fourth grader had extended family in the audience that night, and we all enjoyed this so much. It wasn't just a little performance for us or our student, this was a big deal. Which is what brings me here today for public comment. I want to celebrate the unsung heroes of special education within our school district, the instructional assistants, specifically Heidi Merritt. If you're unfamiliar with Ms. Heidi Merritt, she is our student's IA. She has spent countless hours supporting Colton in his academic learning, safety, and social growth in the school, amongst countless other things. Her professional ability to connect with Colton is evident in watching interactions between them, as her ability to keep him safe and support him in his deficits while also encouraging independence is such a delicate balance that has been mastered in this pair. Our student, Colton, loves Dr. Seuss and music. He loves to dance, and the excitement of this performance was evident, watching him on stage with a huge smile and lots of laughter. What you probably don't know about Colton is that he's nonverbal. He communicates with an AAC device and requires an IA. In my opinion, IAs don't always get the recognition they deserve. They silently show up and often have the biggest responsibilities. Ms. Heidi was the only adult on the stage, hand in hand with Colton for the entire show. My fourth grader got his opportunity to shine due to the selfless work of an educational assistant. I cannot begin to express my gratitude to her and the amazing work she has done and continues to do. I shared this story with our special education team last week, but I'd like to share it with you, as I think this speaks to the impact this has had on my son. When Colton came back from the performance night at Greenfield High School, he was in the dining room, and he was busy on his iPad searching YouTube videos. Shortly after, he comes into the living room, he's laughing and dancing, and he's playing the Seussical soundtrack off of YouTube. I just want to thank you for your time and recognition of the backbone of special education instructional assistants.
Hi, my name is Pamela Goodwin. I live at 54 High Street. I taught in Greenfield Schools' Montague System Pioneer over the years, for many, many years. I also did private tutoring for the superintendent of Greenfield in two different areas. One was a little sixth grader who had to be homeschooled until I brought him into a school setting. One was a teenager who got in trouble and brought in a knife, and he was expelled for the whole year. So I have a lot of experience in the school system, and also I had an occasion to work, if any of you were here long enough to know who Sarah Fogg is in the alternative education room at the high school. Alternative Ed was for difficult children, well, difficult behaviors anyway, and they came and worked with Barry McCollgan. And so I was a staff there in that setting, and we did really well, and those kids didn't really want to be in school, but they came to school and they really functioned beautifully there. I also taught some children at the high school who were at risk. I co-taught with Angela Mass. I co-taught with a gentleman named Matt Stinson for a year. They were all at-risk kids, and then I taught summer school. So I'm just here to ask the school committee, because I know we're getting ready to talk about budget. I'm a little concerned about class size in certain schools, or, you know, maybe it's small at the high school, it's larger in other settings. I also had an occasion to teach remedial reading. I fell into that and a reading program up at Pioneer, and my master's degree was an instruction and curriculum through Leslie College. So I've had a lot of experience, and I would just like us to take a very close look at the budget. I'm not clear on why we're not regionalizing or combining schools the way that some of the other school systems have found necessary to do, because certainly the state is dropping the ball as far as funding for chapter programs. I know Hollomont is now in jeopardy again of being shut down, and combining with maybe, I think it's North Adams, and that's where my three children went to Hollomont for all those years. It was an award-winning national elementary school at that time, and these kids are now in their 40s and 50s. So I just hope that people are able to look outside of the box. I don't know if we're still spending a whole lot of money to park buses somewhere, because that does not make sense to me either. So if some trimming has to happen, I hope that people are able to look closely at what other districts are doing or whatever else might be needed, because I know budget is always a horrific time for all parties concerned. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else in the room who wishes to make public comment?
Anyone on Zoom?
We have two people on Zoom. John McGee will go first.
Hi there. My name is John McGee. I live in Greenfield. As always, thanks to everybody on the committee and the GPS for all of your hard work. Tonight, I just wanted to say thank you to the superintendent for the very sensible and caring policies for protecting, protecting all of our kids in Greenfield schools, and especially the children of immigrants in the face of increasingly xenophobic federal action. And tonight, I want to encourage the school committee to codify those policies officially at the committee level to whatever extent's possible, and to provide for teachers and staff to be trained in carrying them out in practice. That's all I have. Thanks.
Hello? Anna McBean is next. Hi, I'm Anna McBean. I work in schools, and I'm, as an instructional assistant, and I want to just say, kind of tag on to what Amherst, the theme of the night has been, which is to say thank you to Karen. Earlier this year, I got to be with a student in a band concert, and it's because of the support Karen shows for inclusion in all aspects of the district that we knew that we could go ahead and the funding would be okay to have me work that. So thank you, Karen. And then on to the budget. I hope that we can find a solution that doesn't mean that any of the services that we provide our students on the direct level are affected, because those are the services that the students themselves would feel the most impact of if some sort of cut had to be made to our budget that Karen has built. And also thank you, Karen, for the salary cut. I don't think enough people around the town know what you did, so thank you for that. And thank you for your time.
When we spell Anna's last name? It says M-C-B-E-A-N on the Zoom.
M as in Mary, C, B as in Barry, A, N as in Nancy, E.
B-E-A-N.
B, oh, Mick.
B.
I'm sorry, I got that wrong. Can you put on your mic and spell it for Susan?
Susan, it's M-C-B-E-A-N.
Thank you. On to the report of student representatives to the committee, club reports, athletic updates, and the student life highlight.
So this year, the student council took 24 delegates to the three state, or to the three-day state conference in Hyannis. This is the most GHS has ever brought to this conference. We heard from two keynote speakers. Four of our students ran workshops that were presented to 40 students each. We had a really great time and brought home some new awards. Once again, we were recognized as a gold council of excellence. Devon Brown and Stella Verlander received the Commonwealth Award. In addition to their devotion to our council, Ms. Mass nominated them for expanding their leadership into new clubs at our school. Devon helped to create the Students of Color Club and Stella the Sustainability Club. Our council won the Top 10 Project Award, and though we did not win at that level, we would like to recognize Noah Chambers as our council's unsung hero. All in attendance gained valuable skills, and we can't wait to start new initiatives at our school to increase the pride of GHS. Winter sports had a great season. Girls' basketball won their preliminary round in the MIA tournament game versus Baystate Academy. Unfortunately, they did not fare well in the next game, but they had a great experience overall. Boys' basketball was 2-0 in the tournament, until they played against O'Brien High School in Roxbury and lost in double overtime with 70 to 67, but they had a great run. Ice hockey lost in their first round of the tourney to Sandwich High School 3-2 in double overtime. Spring sports start on Monday, March 17th, and you can see schedules on ArbiterLive.com. French Club and Spanish Club hosted the 29th Annual Taste of World Cultures event yesterday, March 11th. This event was very well-attended, and featured performances from GHS Spanish and French students. The Moonlight Classical Chinese Dance Club from Smith College and the Crescent Dancers each performed and invited students and guests to participate in a dance lesson. We enjoyed a multicultural feast donated by generous local businesses, and we were so thankful to see so many students, families, and community members there. Drama Club is busy rehearsing for the somewhat true tale of Robin Hood, their play this year. The actors are studying and working hard to memorize a lot of complex dialogue, including several dance steps and even a cheer. They have the help of Mr. Boston's students to build a turret window, and Mr. Green's art club to help with painting sets. Costumes are being gathered and sewn, thanks to Ms. Potte's daughter, Juliette, and we are looking forward to the performances on April 4th and 5th. Tickets will be sold at the door, and we're looking forward to everyone attending. The Spectrum Club spent their last meeting making bracelets for an upcoming fundraiser that is in the works. They're also connected with Franklin County Pride and will be helping to plan the Pride Prom, which is being held at the Franklin County YMCA on April 26th from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. It is a free event for 8th through 12th graders, and they're excited to plan, decorate, and attend. In news for the Students of Color Club, students have gone to the seventh-grade middle school advisories to present their lesson to address racialized language and provide some new tools to become active bystanders. They've now met with every seventh-grade advisor, and they're now in discussions to meet with Ms. Fenimore to organize presentations to the sixth-grade advisories. And for today's student life presentation, we have Sustainability Club. So this section is again intended to highlight student excellence and achievement. Sustainability Club is a new group this year, and I will not spend too much time introducing them, because they will probably do it better than I will. So Sustainability Club, if you want to take the stand.
So we're just going to go around and say our names. I'm Stella Verlander. I'm a senior.
I'm Isabella Ekblum. I'm a sophomore.
I'm Yelena Alvarado. I'm a sophomore.
And we're just going to give a brief presentation on our club, the Sustainability Club. It's new this year. And, hold on, we have a little presentation, too. Okay. So I founded the Sustainability Club because I saw an opportunity for improvement in our school, and as the next generation of leaders, I knew that GHS students were a necessary part of taking action to make our school more sustainable. Now more than ever, climate activism is greatly needed, and our club members have been working hard to spread awareness and do our part. We've only been a club for around five months, however, we have achieved a lot, and we will share that with you tonight.
As ambitious students, we have many goals and aspirations for our club. We hope to include every GHS student in our events and projects so that sustainability becomes a core value of students at our school. We also strive to always give back to our community in the form of community service and volunteering in any way possible. Through our environment projects, we hope to help our town and school reach net zero carbon emission, continue to keep Greenfield green.
So a big part of our club is our events and projects. That's really what makes everything fun. And so far this year, we have walked over six miles in Monty's March and raised $700, $970 for the Food Bank of Western Massachusetts. This went towards meals that people in need, and this is really just to help fight the hunger crisis in America, and specifically Western Massachusetts. And recently, we took a trip to the Massachusetts State House in Boston and participated in the Massachusetts Youth Climate Coalition Lobby Day. We advocated for priority climate bills and spoke with Representative Natalie Blaze and Senator Joanne Commerford. We learned a lot about the legislative process from this experience, and we were met with a lot of support from the representatives. So these bills that are in particularly bad places in the state of where bills get passed, a lot of them were in the Ways and Means Committee, and we're helping to move those forward so that things like clean air, climate, education will be implemented into schools all over Massachusetts. And as a part of our continued interest in food conservation and composting, we've conducted two food waste studies this year during our lunch periods at school. We found that each person creates around .65 to .75 pounds on average of food waste in a day, and this research goes towards our interest in re-implementing composting programs in the high school. And then as we get more research and we move to doing food waste studies in the middle school and elementary school, to then move interest in composting to all schools in the district.
As all clubs and student activities strive for, we aim to leave a lasting positive impact on our, on our school. We've increased awareness in the school community and already through our events and our media presence. Recently, we had the opportunity to speak with Evelyn McDonnell, McDonnell, McDuggall about our club for the Greenfield Recorder, which broadened our outreach.
Moving forward, since we're a new organization, can you hear me? Yeah. Since we're a new organization to the school, it's hard to pack a large number of events into our first year. This is why we've started planning ahead and thinking about fun things to implement into our club next year. This spring, we hope to do some gardening on a smaller scale and use our garden beds outside of the high school to grow some produce and flowers. We've been inspired by a fellow GHS organization, the Student of Color Club, and we hope we can follow their example in giving information sessions and presentations to school in our districts. Majority of climate and sustainability organizations host climate summit annually. This is a great way to get connected with other schools, though these events also learn a lot from keynote speakers and workshops. In April, we're planning to attend the Phyllis Academy Andover Youth Summit and hope In April, we're planning to attend the Phyllis Academy Andover Youth Club Summit and hopefully make attending climate summits a tradition for our club.
Thank you all for listening to our presentation. We hope this has given you into some insight into what our club does and we hope um we're constantly growing and expanding our organization and there's a lot more that has yet to come. Thank you again for your attention and have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you be able to answer questions if committee members have any for you? Thank you. Any questions for either Shane or for the Sustainability Club? Yeah, Member Childs?
Not a question. I just want to congratulate you for the success you're having and wish you the best in continuing to grow this program so that hopefully it will start reaching into the schools at the lower level. So thank you for what you're doing for your school and community.
Thank you. Thank you for your support. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. I'm impressed at your ability to stay hopeful in times that seem kind of dark to some of us, so it's really um hopeful when people keep moving forward in, in difficult times. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you so much.
Alright, I'm going to um propose a change to the order of our agenda that we would move on now to the business manager, but after the business manager's report, um I move that the, we um changed the order so the mayor's presentation regarding the mayor's proposed fiscal year twenty-twenty-six school budget proposal and rationale comes after that. Is, is there a, a second? Okay, there's the first, the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A second from Member Childs and a, and a mo- motion from Member Martini. Um, any discussion? Okay, um roll call, vote. Uh, Secretary Denis?
Member Goodwin?
Yes.
Member Childs?
Yes.
Secretary Denis, yes. Chair Johnson, aside?
I'm a yes.
Vice Chair Sexton?
Yes.
Member Martini?
Yes.
Mayor Disorger?
Yes.
Vote is unanimous.
Alright, we'll move on to the business manager's report. Andy?
Could you hold on? You had in your packets the budget reports from March. Uh, in addition to my memo with the summary of the highlights as how things stand as of the March report. Um, we are, believe it or not, uh, well into our preparing the closing of the fiscal year, reviewing incumbences, both salary and non-salary. Uh, you have, I highlighted some of the accounts that aren't necessar- aren't formally encumbered, but will be expended, uh, transportation salaries and those six items that are listed there. So when you do that and then apply our remaining funds that we planned on using when this budget was built, we have to deal with normal, I say normal end of the year expenditures that aren't highlighted in those uh six of the six hundred eighty-two thousand, six hundred forty-one dollars. But if like, I didn't want to go through, I could have gone through the, the budget and exhausted, you know, all the supply lines, et cetera, but those six items are the ones that I kind of, if you look at the trends, are the ones that we normally spend uh through the end of the year. Transportation salaries, it's just we, uh, they're, they're not encumbered, so we, we do a manual encumbrance for those. Um, in addition, we, we were notified recently of two placements where we were assigned fiscal responsibility, so that will also eat into the six hundred eighty-two thousand. So with that said, I can answer any questions that you might have. As I said, when you look, just one thing before the questions. I always like to show the percent expended and committed and the percent available, so when you look, uh, we're at ninety-seven point one-two percent expended and or committed with a two-point-eight-eight percent balance to be able to address other end of the year unanticipated and unencumbered expenses.
Thank you. Questions from the committee? Uh, looks like Member Martini, and then we'll go to Mayor Disorger. Member Martini?
Thanks, Andy. Do you know the um ballpark cost of those uh two placements for which we are now fiscally responsible?
I do not, uh, and I think that that is yet to be determined.
Okay, thanks.
Mayor?
Um, I have two questions. Um, Andy, um, I have questioned if it, it's really the same category, but on three different pages. Um, on pages seven, eight, and eleven, the, the maintenance of bu- buildings, whether it's an encumbrance, what is it that we're paying for on page, I can tell you the exact line item if you want to know. On page seven?
Two thousand eight hundred eighty-three dollars encumbered?
No, um, it's maintenance of buildings. So I have page seven, and what would that be? It's under Greenfield High School. And we-
Page seven is the middle school, you're on.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, you know, the, the top line's a little dark. I don't have enough light on this. I apologize. So, um, we spent like eight hundred, eight thousand seven thirty-three, and then it's encumbered, six thousand two hundred sixty-six. The incumbences, that's what I'm curious about, and, and maybe we're doing it all the same way. The encumbrance, what is that for? Do you know?
Uh, I'd have to get the detail of the OPPOs. Uh, that's the probably several purchase orders that the facilities director has used for supplies and materials related to building maintenance.
Okay, well then never mind. I'm not gonna go out to the other two pages.
I can get those though. It's very, it's just a matter of, uh, I'm on a Mac right now and I can't log into miss on a Mac. I have to go through a PC, so uh, if you want, I can, while the meeting's going on, I can run that report.
It's, it, it was just, I, I wondered what else we were, what we were encumbering for the end of the school. And, and it's, it's not that important. The other thing I wanted to know was on the circuit breaker account. Um, so this, um, we're still supposed to get three more payments on that, according to the DESI website, of three hundred and seventeen thousand about.
Right.
We didn't get, the December one doesn't look like it was given yet to our community, and I saw several other communities that didn't have that as well. Do you know why, why that is? It wasn't listed on the website, that's-
I could not tell you, uh, uh, I can research that, but you know, I know it's, I don't know if it impacts cash flow for the city, but I know come June thirty, whatever our allocated amount that we're scheduled to receive, we will receive it, so it could be a delay on their end for who knows what reasons, but you know, I, I just, I, I would say that I have seen delays in the past in previous fiscal years. Um, you know, I could say, you know, the reason I've ever, I've ever seen a delay is if there's an end of the year report that wasn't submitted in time, but they do have our end of the year report, so it's not at all anything related to that.
Okay, um, and if, uh, if I can continue, just on this, it looks like we, we posted the, the last one for fiscal year twenty-four, it probably came in on the very last day. We posted that, it was the last one of fiscal year twenty-four in twenty-five. So my real question is, can we put five payments in, in this, um, in fiscal year twenty-five, because we'll do three more?
Uh.
Is that allowed?
No, you're supposed to post the revenues, the revenues I recognize, well, it, I would say on the city side, they should have accrued the revenue. Because it comes to your, it comes to the treasurer's office, so the revenue should be accrued and then it should have been posted to F I twenty-four.
Okay, because it looks like three were posted to, um, it looks like three were posted in fiscal year twenty-four, and I can see that we do three more, which will be almost another, we're close to another million. But okay, I've got it. Thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions for the business manager? Okay, we will move on to the um mayor's presentation regarding mayor's proposed fiscal year twenty-twenty-six school budget proposal and rationale. Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you, Karen and Glenn for adding me to the agenda to speak on this tonight. The school budget, I just have a prepared statement, not a presentation. The school budget is a critical component of the overall city budget. Education provides every student the opportunity to become their best selves. Beyond that, investing in public schools is the most important expenditure of any community that any community can make for its future. The mayor's school budget number for this year is twenty-three million, six hundred and ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars. There are three main drivers for that number, including external and internal budget factors. This decision was not made lightly. My emphasis as a mayor is establishing a stable financial pathway for the city and for our schools. Despite alarming changes federally, I am very hopeful that there will be no changes to our cherry sheet numbers for fiscal year twenty-six. I have contacted the Mass Municipal Association and the Department of Revenue for guidance. The D O R suggested very conservative budgeting. Despite my prudent budget choices thus far, we, we were informed that we have a one-in-three chance of our bond rating being reduced next year due to a, to, due to seventy-four million dollars of outstanding debt and the fifty-one million dollar unfunded retirement liability. Health insurance costs will increase by sixteen point five percent this year, as they did last year. That figure will represent a one-point-five million dollar increase to the city budget. These increases are unprecedented. Historically, healthcare premiums have risen by four percent annually over the last ten years. As you know by law, our budget can only increase by two and a half percent. For the city of Greenfield, this means that the entire budget can increase by approximately one-point-four to one-point-five million. Most of that increase this year will go to paying the skyrocketing healthcare premiums. Our total healthcare costs will increase from eight-point-eight million to ten-point-three million. The school budget increase request this year is almost two million. The ask is more than the, than the overall city budget can increase. Every year, our budget can increase about one-point-four to one-point-five million. Last year, the schools received about two-thirds of the total city increase. This year, the school committee approved a twenty-five a million, five hundred and eighty-seven thousand roughly, which is an increase of one million, eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and six dollars. If this were the only department requesting a budget increase, it would be mathematically impossible to fund the city budget and pay for the employees' health insurance. And no mayor can submit a budget that the city cannot fund. Last year, almost every department head asked me for more staff. I said no, because we could not pay for it. We added one full-time position for the entire city in fiscal year twenty-five. These are our constraints within which we have to operate. Although the above external factors are outside of the cont- control, many factors we can and must control to survive. These are the solutions we can explore today, but must change this year to avoid a fiscal cliff. The Nezdek study uh was published just in June of twenty-twenty-two. It is already obsolete. In less than three years, we have lost two-hundred-and-fifty-four students. The, the, the report predict- predicted this decline would happen over a ten-year period. The dramatic change means that we must reexamine our plans. Our plans won't work with our budget or the current enrollment. For those of you watching, the Nezdek study is on the G P S K website under redistricting. I will be referencing one other paper, which is under the Energy Department, under Buildings. If we move the eighth grade out of the high school in September as planned, there will be only three hundred children in a state-of-the-art, energy-efficient building designed to hold seven hundred and eighty-eight children. The high school building is superb and has the best energy rating of any of our schools with an E U I of thirty-seven. Conversely, the middle school has the worst energy rating of any of our schools with an E U I of fifty-seven. Keep in mind, the high school costs sixty million dollars to build, of which we pay one-point-three million every single year out of our city budget until twenty-thirty-nine. A plan that puts the seventh and eighth grade at the high school utilizes the building better while still being well under full capacity. The fifth and sixth grade could move to the elementary schools with the same equity plan that we all strive for. We can do a great job for our students, increasing resources for music, arts, and sports. P T speech and O T programs will be centralized, reducing travel time, busing costs, and maximizing the impacts for these services. For our schools to improve, improve, we must prioritize our spending on teachers and paraprofessionals, and we must reduce building and administrative costs. Of note, on the school budget slideshow, there was no actual figure uh of, of the cost of moving the fifth and eighth grades. It is known that, it is known, we add more teachers for less overall students in our schools in this move plan. A meaningful restructuring of schools could provide the education every one of us wants and simultaneously accomplish the equity we are striving for. When ha- when parents have the opportunity to choose what school to send their children to, they are looking for strong music and arts programs, excellent academics, robust athletics, and exciting field trips. These things are possible, but only if we course correct now. These sheer gold, sheer gold remains impossible if the current plan stands. I am not an educator, but I do know that the numbers don't lie. We know the future of funding looks grim. Earlier this week, the president cut the USDA food programs that we rely on to feed our students. How can we justify the massive increase of the current plan when we now have to find a way to make sure hungry bellies are full? We don't have another year to wait. The die will be cast and we won't have any other options. Transportation costs are another massive expenditure within our control. Evaluating contracted services, the size and energy consumption of our fleet is needed. A plan that includes oversight is necessary. Our school committee becomes aware of new vehicle purchases after they have happened. All vehicle expenditures need to go through the capital planning process. The city all is a green community and, and, and almost lost grant funding uh last year because of a vehicle purchased by another department that did not align with energy standards. Lastly, on the budget figures, on the numbers, the increased cost of out-of-district tuition seems factually inaccurate. It was reported to us that out-of-district tuition costs would rise by one-point-five million dollars. The Director of Student Services agreed that all our students attend, students governed by the, governed by the Office of Students with Disabilities. As I stated last month, that tuition can only increase by three-point-six-seven percent. Additionally, the practice of encumbering larger amounts than we will spend is pervasive. We need to represent the facts properly. Although fiscal year twenty-six seems daunting, fiscal year twenty-seven is predicted to be far worse. I sincerely hope that we can come together to address these very serious issues. Let's fix this while we can together. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I think it'd be good for the committee to get to discuss your presentation. I think maybe one way to proceed would be to start with um questions for the mayor to make sure we're all um starting with just basic, uh, basic facts and information and then for the, the committee to get to share their um perspective on your presentation. Um, I ju- I think it would be good, um, might be helpful for the public- I think it would be good, might be helpful for the public, to know that what you have put forward is a point-zero-zero-one-one percent decrease from fiscal twenty-five, two-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars less than the current fiscal year's budget. Are there questions that committee members have for the mayor about her presentation? Member Denise?
I'm not sure that it's so much a question as a confirmation. Are you saying that you do not wish to go forward with the redistricting that we worked on and proposed through the many community engagement meetings that we had?
I am saying, I realize that we had many meetings on this. I also feel that when I actually raised my hand on this again, that some of the discussion was discouraged. However, I definitely think what we spoke about with the redistricting, putting the fifth grade and maybe the sixth grade along with them, with the street design, et cetera, is a great idea. I think that we definitely need to look at the use of the schools now. To have a high school with three hundred students in it, to be running two massive schools at half-capacity with all the administrative costs is not something that we can afford to do. I referred to the Nezdek study, and where they had us ten years from now is where we are now. And I think that those numbers actually mandate that we look at what we are doing, considering the cost that this move is going to be for us. To underutilize the most energy-efficient building at this point in time does not seem to be good judgment at all.
I guess I'm asking because I appear to be the chair of the Redistricting Subcommittee that was ad hoc but is still alive, and I would like to see if you could, I guess I'm requesting that you could send me all of that information. And in case we need to meet again, I need to know what your views and thoughts and plans are regarding this, because it's certainly different than what we had worked on for several years.
I was removed from the redistricting committee, but I am happy to submit any of this to you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the mayor about her proposal? Member Childs?
Would it be possible for us to get a written copy of it just for better digesting?
I will get that to everyone. If not tonight, tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the mayor? Okay. Member Martini?
Thank you. I appreciate Member Denise's questions and comments. I feel quite disturbed that after having engaged in a two-and-a-half-year, community-wide project to design this redistricting, to consider pulling the rug out from under families who've already made decisions about which school their child will be attending next year and what have you. And also, I appreciate Member Childs's request just now. Maybe we are provided with materials for everything that is on the agenda, and I would very much have appreciated having this as part of our meeting materials before this meeting. It's very hard to respond to a slew of detailed comments without having any lead time to consider them. And I just want to clarify, Mayor, in the school committee's recent budget hearing, the budget proposal that was approved was presented and discussed alongside level service funding, which would have constituted a five-and-change percent increase. But what you are proposing here is not just not the school committee's proposed budget and not even not just level service. It's actually not even level funding. It's actually less than our previous budget. I just want to ask you to confirm that that is what you are suggesting.
So, Member Martini, two things on the redistricting. First, yes, we did talk about, we talked about the redistricting. The cost projection, however, was unrealized by any of us until that budget came out. My commitment to equity remains incredibly firm, and I agree with all of you on what we had proposed, but things changed. And I kept trying to raise my hand to speak about this, but we need to look at the numbers of the children that are in, that we have now in the school system in light of facing daunting changes to our health insurance. The rising cost of health insurance is the main driver for what is happening to the overall city budget. We're together in this. City employees make up maybe about forty percent. School employees make up sixty percent, but everyone is paying and getting fabulous insurance that I want them to continue to have. But that increase to the budget is going to be one-and-a-half million dollars. So, we are, many departments are being cut. This is not my favorite time of the year. Many departments across the city are facing cuts because we can't afford to, you can only do what you can afford to do. There was another part of your, oh, there was another piece of what you said. I actually did not concur with the one-point-five million dollar increase that we were projected to have in out-of-district tuition expenses. If there was a four percent, just say even a four percent increase to out-of-district tuition costs, that would have meant that we spent thirty-seven-and-a-half million on out-of-district tuition. So, I questioned that number also. And let me just see if there's anything else. We are down approximately five percent of students over the past fiscal year. I think that those things were not talked about, and we need to look at the spending and the best way that we can do this to give a great education to our children. This pains me terribly to do this. I think I have the same love of education that we all do. I hope I answered your question.
Member Martini, I saw your hand. Do you want to follow up?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that explanation, Mayor. I also wondered when this situation in regards to health insurance came to your attention because I feel quite sure it's probably something that's been worrying you for quite a while. And I am wondering why you didn't come forward with any prepared motions during our budget hearing or prior to that to amend the budget that the school committee would be proposing, because I'm sure that that would have been discussed at that time, and the school committee would have been interested in that. But there was no such motion from your corner. Explain why not?
Absolutely. That was confirmed two days ago, and I would say probably the first time that I heard that it was going to be in the sixteen percent range was within the month. It is certainly not anything that I kept from anyone. I think I told the superintendent as soon as I started worrying about it. I knew what it was last year. I hoped that that was an anomaly, but I did not have advance notice of that, that I kept from anyone, because honestly, it's just not how I operate. When we got the first number, he said it was going to be sixteen point nine percent. I'm sure that was in the month, but I can check. We asked the person to go back to the insurance company. We called a meeting of the, you know, the I A C, but this was all happening, I would say probably since our last meeting.
Thank you for the clarity. I just have one other question, but if someone else has their hand up over there, I don't want to monopolize.
Member Goodwin, and then we'll come back to you, Member Martini.
I just remember this being brought up in a meeting when we were discussing things.
What, being brought up?
Health insurance.
That the health insurance would be quite high this year. Yeah.
Yes, that was brought up.
That wasn't, that wasn't.
Multiple times.
Yeah, okay. Back to you, Member Martini, and then we'll go to Member Denise.
So, say that this is the level of funding that the school department does receive in F Y twenty-six, and we have to contend with less than even level funding of the school budget. This in some total would represent more than a one-point-eight million dollar cut to the proposed budget, and I am curious exactly what you would suggest be cut. And I need more specifics than just to say that we should have less administration. I'm asking what exactly you are suggesting be cut or who you suggest.
So, that decision won't be mine, but will be the superintendent's, and then we would be looking at whatever the superintendent presents. My suggestion, however, would be to provide the best services that we look at the utilization of our schools. I don't make a decision for the committee, but if we put seventh and eighth grade in the high school, and I've been running these numbers, looking at what Nezdek said just over the past couple of weeks, what would fit in the elementary schools? If we were able to do K through six or one through six in our elementary schools, I think we could do that without, while providing the same services that all of us are hoping for. I think that we have to look at a better utilization of the numbers in face of the, when faced with the declining numbers that are startling. It was June of twenty-twenty-two when that Nezdek study was published, and since then, as I said, we're down two-hundred-and-fifty-four students. I think we, I'm not sure, and there are people that know more than me about that, but I think either with the same design that we worked on, so I didn't want my fellow teammates and members to think throwing out the idea, because it was important for all of us to have equity within our schools, but can you afford to keep six schools running? That's not talking about, we need and all want to provide the same level of education and services to our children, so do I. But when faced with the budget constraints that we are faced with, I had to make terrible choices last year. Last year, the school request was for one million, three hundred and, like, it was for one million, three hundred and thirty-three dollar increase, and I put forward a nine-hundred and something, I think it was a nine-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar increase. As I said, that was two-thirds of what the entire city budget could go up. And when I said that we added one full-time employee, that's true. I cut one full-time employee from I T, and we added one person in assessing and one firefighter. So, that's a plus-one for the whole city because of what we were faced with, with insurance. And it's not a position that I want to be in, but it's not a position that I want all of us to be in. But it is not economically feasible for us to go forward without looking at what else we can do and what we could combine. So, when you asked me about cutting, that wasn't what I was thinking, like, who, you know, whose position would I be cutting? I would be looking at which schools we could combine, because actually, that would be an enormous savings while providing the same education to our children. I don't think it's possible to continue using the six schools. And we might not be able to pay hungry children. I mean, we might not be able to afford to feed our hungry children. So, I feel, I know it's a prophet of doom here, but if the writing is on the wall, and we know it's not getting better, and that is a factual thing, what happened with our health insurance, we had the person come before us. The fact of the matter is, and I did send this printout to both the superintendent and the assistant superintendent, we are spending more than our premiums. The health insurance costs by our members are more than our health insurance premiums. We did everything last year. We asked every single other health insurance company if they would take us on, but they would not because what our employees and their family members spent on their health needs was higher than the premium that went into the health insurance company, and they're running a business. And then nobody else wanted to pick us up. So, that's a reality that we're faced with two years in a row. We tried the I A C, and I forget, the I A C, the G I C, and another one that some different employees had suggested, and they wouldn't take us. So, I was hoping it would be better this year, but it's not. I don't like to be in this position either, but when we're here, it's like, what are we going to do? What are we going to do that is the best plan? And running two schools at half-capacity doesn't seem like the best idea to me. That's a plan that I came up with, but I'm just one member. I have to run the budget, though. Go ahead, sorry.
Member Denise, and then back to Member Martini.
I'm sad and really frustrated in this moment, I just have to say. We always knew when we were talking about redistricting that six schools was really not a sustainable thing that we could have forever. I mean, I've talked to a lot of people about that. We talked about that in the Subcommittee. The pie-in-the-sky dream was always that someday after redistricting, we could all come together and start working on a plan to have a new elementary school so that we wouldn't have six individual buildings, you know, that were all in different states of disrepair or, you know, had space issues. And I think that there And I think that there are so many things that are just there are moving pieces to this that I think aren't just about, oh, let's just put this grade in this school. Like, that's not how it works. There's employing employment contracts on the table. There's her transportation changes that have to happen. I cannot tell you how long the superintendent was saying that she spent undoing all of the streets to ascertain who could ride what buses where. We did a whole piece with the family engagement. There are families who have made choices on where their child is going to go for, you know, the remainder of their time in a certain school. And there are best practices regarding grade grade bands and where they're housed, and it's just such a complex issue. I just don't I don't see it being as easy as, oh, we have a more energy efficient school here with some space. Let's stick some kids there. So I feel dismayed. I would much rather like to see us come together and look at how we can add more energy efficiency to the middle school, perhaps, to reduce costs. There are lots of things out there, and I just I I I don't see this working, and it makes me very sad because I spent a long time, many hours with so many of you in little rooms, talking about what you wanted, what would fit, what it would look like, and then to just have it sort of lost because of healthcare costs is really sad. It's just sad. I just want to say it. It's just sad. And I don't know what to do, but this just throwing people wherever to save a buck just doesn't seem like the right thing to do.
Member Martini?
Thanks. Mayor, I think I heard you say that we should not have so many schools as we have, but I'm confused and would like to know which school are you suggesting we eliminate? I need more specific information about exactly what you're suggesting and when you think that should happen.
So first, I wanted to address uh, Member Denise. I hear your sadness. I can feel that. This to me is not about sticking people some somewhere or another, their families with children. And I don't think any of those decisions are easy for anyone. But the de- the declining enrollment was not predicted. And the rise in costs was not predicted. I just want to assure you that I I have kids. I have nine grandchildren. Both my daughter-in-law's teachers, reading specialists. This is a crushing thing to make a a a cut to the school budget. But it is what 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 can we afford to do and what makes the most economic sense? I I don't want us to think of it like the mayor wants to stick people somewhere. They're people. But I also want to say, when we make this decision, the presentation that we had was about hiring new people. I work very hard to make sure that we're not losing people for the, you know, for the people that I I I'm kind of over, I guess, as you would say it, uh, that are under my employ. So when we're making any of these decisions and I'm worrying about it, I always say, oh, if I know who that is, like if we have somebody already, they have faces and families. So I always try to make a decision that is before I've done anything like that. All I just want to say to you is, facing the financial concerns that we are, we're talking about hiring. We're talking about moving teachers, first of all, from the eighth grade eh down to the middle school. Then hiring new people that we haven't met yet, people with faces and families. That's how I see this. And that's why I talked about making the decision before it was happening. I wasn't expecting to be here either. And then I want to go back. I'm sorry. I was answering that question more. Then Member Martini's, remember Martini, I lost that because I was trying to answer.
That's okay. My my question was, I think I heard you say that um you think that we have too many schools for our number of students, and I want you to explain which school you think we should eliminate and when you think that should happen.
Okay, so I didn't actually, I was, I I didn't want to come out and say something for the whole committee, but I'm just running the numbers on this. It appears to me, it appears obvious to me, but I don't mean that it needs to be obvious to anyone else, that running six schools as we are doing, running two large schools with, you know, with four custodians and the accompanying administration doesn't feel like the best idea. They are the two, the two larger schools are the ones that I see. This is just from a practical standpoint, but there's there's people that walk there, so I I it's hard to, you know, talk about it on a taking into consideration that people whose jobs this would affect, but those are the two large schools. And I think that's that's where we have to make the decision. Two large schools that are running would.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I I just don't understand your answer.
Okay, the answer was the middle school is uh is the one that I I would think the the one that we should be closing.
So you're suggesting that we close the middle school, move the seventh grade to the high school and make all of the elementary schools K through six?
K through six.
And when do you think, when are you suggesting that would happen?
If that would be possible to do for next year, I would do it next year. And if we needed another year in between, I would do it the year after that. If we moved five, five through, um, if I think the best plan would be to do it next year if it was humanly possible, and if not, the year after that. Because I don't actually know. I'm not a superintendent or an educator or somebody that does bus plans. And I don't know how long that would take to do, and I will tell you, I know that our superintendent works extraordinarily hard. I think she gives a hundred and fifty percent. And I I know what I put into a budget. I I can tell you, I think she puts her heart and her soul into the schools. And so I can't speak on her behalf or the folks that she works with about how long that would take to do. And this is very difficult for me to talk about, but I think it needs to be done. I think the writing is on the wall, and I think by doing that we could afford to provide everything that everybody talks about in all of these meetings. Some of you are far more educated than I am on these reading plans, et cetera. There are all of these wonderful plans that you want. I think we could do all of those if we consolidated the buildings. So you asked me very specifically, I think it's the middle school that we need to look at closing. That's my opinion. And I I think it would be a very unwise choice to make the decision that we're making for September. So I would keep, I would do seventh and eighth grade. I don't think that is in into the high school this year. Keep that good running facility, you know, almost at a not really near capacity because they certainly could take more, and I think we should all be discussing if K through six or one through six would fit in all of the elementary schools. I run the numbers and I'm uh not quite sure, and I am I'm I'm not an educator. But I am very good with math.
Uh, Member Martini?
Thanks. Again, does anybody else have a hand up? Because I don't want to.
I'm recognizing you only when I don't see any other hands raised, so you're good.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, for being um being more straightforward about that. Have you met with the superintendent to ask whether the numbers that you have run are accurate and whether what you're suggesting would be in any way feasible?
The superintendent and I meet um every two weeks. And we did not discuss that. I thought that this was a good discussion to have uh with all of us, whether or not we could put all of the people in one school is is not a decision that the two of us had together, but I would welcome that discussion with her um next week.
Right, no, but when I when I am wondering about something and I'm not sure whether I am correct or maybe I weigh off base about something, I put the question out there to the superintendent just to make sure that I I am I'm on the right track, so I I would hope that everyone is doing that. And um I am not the superintendent, uh, and I'm much like you and um not in that role, and and I was also not on the redistricting committee that led the work on this project over the last several years. I'm just cognizant of the fact that it took two and a half years to develop the plan that we were supposed to be implementing in September, and so I feel very skeptical about the uh plausibility to implement a wholesale different plan in a mere less than six months. That's like five five and a half months um at this point, so I would be very worried about that. And also, I think I heard you say that you wanted to see no less in services to our students. But I'm very perplexed as to how that would happen because we provided uh a budget proposal that included level service numbers. So a level service budget would uh be twenty four million nine hundred eighty one dollars and one uh nine hundred eighty one thousand one hundred fifty seven dollars. So what what you're suggesting here is about one point two million dollars less than that. And I am I'm I know that you will know and and uh most people will be aware that we have contracted step raises and um agreements that we have worked out with our staff in our last uh round of contract negotiations that must be on it and absolutely, I don't understand how uh anyone could think that we would not lose services uh with a drastic cut like that. And um I'm just recollecting the last time that the school committee had to um contend with a shortfall of about two hundred thousand dollars, I think it was. Um, and we lost several positions, including our entire foreign language program in the middle school, so uh I'm I'm very worried about about what you are suggesting. I I appreciate the pressures that you're under, and I'm I'm sorry, I'm not trying to uh pummel you here, but I am I'm very concerned.
I I just wanted to say two things. I thought this was, this is not easy for me either. I think this is, it was better to have a discussion publicly. And the finances and it have changed dramatically as has our enrollment. And you, I I think that is an enormous savings. As we look, if if we were looking at a change in the buildings, I I think in and of itself, that saves a lot. I don't think that would involve a loss of any teachers or paraprofessionals. That was, I think you could easily do that without having that happen. But again, I'm not the superintendent, nor do I claim to be. But in the end, I'm going to do my best to submit a a thoughtful budget for the entire city. And this, eh, the other part of this and some of this, it's been like since January, as we all know. It's, this is a scary place to be in as far as budgeting. I get things from my delegation delegation saying it's a terrifying time right now. And this isn't even predicted to be the bad year, okay? So I guess I want you to think about, I want you to think about that and perhaps my perspective on this and why I'm saying this today. Because knowing, well, none of us knows the future, right? But anticipating what next year might be, how bad it's predicted to be. Would it not, would we not be having more foresight to be not making a change that's going to um hook us into or have us into more, um, you know, have done some things that we can't turn back on. I guess that's how I want to say that. Just remember, you know, the federal government cut food funding for children. But it it makes me think that that we have to do that now. Do you know what I'm saying? The things that are coming from outside of that may be saying we have to look at what we're doing on the inside. And and to try to provide the very best that we can.
Other questions from the committee? Member Denise?
I, okay, I I do understand your perspective, Mayor, but you did say in your presentation that that the middle school is one of the more energy efficient buildings, and the high school is also energy efficient building, so but now you're saying to close the middle school. So I don't know if I have that right. I guess I'll have to read your proposal when you send it in, but you did also say, I believe I heard, that there were costs associated with going through the redistricting plan that we created. Well, there would also be costs closing the middle school and moving multiple grades around. I mean, there's that cost also, so I'm just perplexed as to I'm perplexed as to this whole plan, just perplexed. Sorry, I don't have a question.
Do you want to respond?
Yes, um, Elizabeth, the most energy efficient of any of our buildings is the high school building. It has an EUI, an energy rating of thirty seven. The um the middle school has the worst energy rating of any of our schools. It has an EUI fifty seven. That that is, I will send you what's on the um Energy and Sustainability website. It was about building efficiencies. And yes, um, everything that we do has an associated cost with it. It is just, if we were talking about making this move and hiring new people because of it, I think that puts us in a fiscally more precarious state for next year. Where some of the federal cuts are going to hit us so much in the face that it would just be be wise for us to be making a decision this year. And I understand it's March. I didn't think January and February were going to go the way they did on the federal level. I bet none of us did. And I didn't reach out to the Department of Revenue last year for guidance on my budget because I didn't have to. Things were stable. But faced with with the looming changes on the federal eh that are going to come and and hit us and what is hitting us in the face this year, you try to make the best decisions that you can. Thank you.
I'm sorry, just have a follow-up.
Follow-up from Member Denise, then Member Childs, then Member Martini.
And then I promise I'm done. Um does GMS function on fossil fuels? Do we use heating oil and things? There is my first question. And my second question is, have has have you looked into the upgrades that um the MSBA will do for the middle school? Because they it is a new enough building that they would do upgrades most likely. So that's my question. See how far down that rabbit hole you've gone.
I I would say that our energy director leaves no stone unturned as far as that goes. And I can get more information to you on for all of your questions on fossil fuels.
Member Childs?
So first, I just want to put it out there that the new hires in question were to make it so that the middle school children would have full years each of science and social studies as opposed to as opposed to a sixth grader getting half a year of one, then half a year of the other. It is an investment in an age group that, i- it's a tricky age group. Uh, the families I know who've left district have left from the middle school. It is an area that we do need to be spending attention. And man, just 'cause something's a good investment, if you don't have money, how do you invest imaginary money into it? It's tricky. I don't think we can have an answer tonight. I think what we need to figure out first of all is, what is the timeframe we're working on that we have to come up with a solution? What is doable? Uh, what will destabilize things so much with so much uncertainty that we would end up losing even more students because the families are scared?
Mayor, would you like to respond?
Um, so, well, you and I, we're we're gonna continue to bleed students if we can't afford to feed them. And it's just, this is a a priority. We're gonna have to prioritize what we can afford. That's what I do every day when I'm looking at my budget. That's what I'm doing here, and I I perhaps by consolid, I I think we'd all have to say by consolidating by consolidating in and of itself, there are savings. I think that we could all think about that for a little bit. There are obvious savings by consolidating. And we can address those perhaps together. I am more than happy to come to any extra meetings that we have on this.
Member Martini?
I'm glad to hear you say that, Mayor, because I was just about to suggest that um I don't think that we will be able to um resolve this discussion this evening, especially since members had no time to prepare for this discussion. And I was going to suggest uh that the school committee schedule a special meeting. And I also wanted to uh clarify something I think important because we keep talking about the um increase in the school department's requested budget due to additional staff because of the redistricting plan that was established over the last few years and is to be implemented this fall. Uh, but that is actually only one out of five uh significant factors contributing to the local increase in the uh proposed budget this year. So uh, even if we were to scuttle the redistricting, um then that does not mean that the school department would not need additional funds. Um, our Esra grant funding ended in September. There has been an increase in out-of-district special education tuitions, and I would say I would just remind everyone, when we don't provide uh quality services in district, then out-of-district placements will increase. Um, also, there was a transportation adjustment uh for the contracting out with travel cuts. There are our curriculum and instruction materials that were previously paid out of grants, which we now need to cover ourselves, and I would Mayor, I'm glad that you mentioned the literacy efforts that the district has been making because central to that was our investment in CKLA Amplify as our new ELA uh instructional resource from kindergarten through grade seven, which is uh a resource that is helping us to align our instruction with reading science more than um the hodgepodge of uh resources and uh lack of resources we were providing to our teachers in the past, and I would be heartbroken to have to say goodbye to it. Um, and uh and I would underscore Member Goodwin's comments from our last meeting about uh the fact that we still have a super majority of our students who are not achieving literacy proficiency, and we need a long-term commitment to um improving our resources like that in order to move that needle. And then lastly was the redistricting um alignment, and I just wanna clarify that the school's uh proposed budget included seven new positions, and just four of those were related to the uh the redistricting in that we would need to go to full-year science and social studies at the middle school levels, which necessitates another middle school team. Uh, and also, the superintendent has let us know on several occasions previously that we would need to do that anyway uh because of requirements uh to meet expectations of the state. So I'm not certain that not doing this would um eliminate the need to have those four positions. And I just wanna highlight the other um positions that were included in this proposed budget. That includes an additional English language learner teacher. Uh, we need one, and our English learners deserve to have enough teachers. Uh, so that is not related to redistricting, uh so far as I know, and uh we sorry, I uh I need to get to the right spot here. Uh, Superintendent, correct me if I'm wrong, I our, the English learner position that is included in the proposed budget, that is not related to redistricting, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Uh, the other two positions were a building-based substitute at the Discovery School at Four Corners. Um, and Superintendent, again, correct me if my recollection is wrong, but um that is included because it is the only one of our schools that does not have one?
Correct.
Thank you, and the last one was a beacon teacher. For anyone who does not know, the Beacon uh program is a alternative pathway to graduation for students who are otherwise at high risk of uh dropping out and not attaining their high school diploma, and that program was recently uh eliminated by the Collaborative which used to provide it for our students, thirty of whom have benefited from it um in recent years, and so the superintendent felt um it was really crucial to continue to provide those services uh to our students, especially considering our uh efforts to improve our graduation rates. Uh, so I just wanna, I wanna make clear that not everything in this budget, and not even a lot of it, is related to um increased positions because of redistricting, and again, I want to underscore that we have increases in this budget that are related to our existing staff, so a level service budget would still uh represent about one point two million more dollars than the mayor is suggesting.
I'm I'm just gonna respond to that by saying there's one part of this budget that, as I indicated, um the increased cost, there was one thing that kept coming up, but it was the main part of the budget. So I think we really are gonna be a lot better off than we think. That our out-of-district tuition costs are gonna increase by one point five million dollars is not factually accurate. And um, we have a million dollars in the circuit breaker right now. I was kind of indicating that in the questions that I asked, with three more payments coming. So that will put us up to one point nine million. That's uh account number fifteen fifteen in fifteen oh four, Special Student Fund. There's a million dollars in that. Um, and so I think you could breathe a sigh of relief on where we are with that major expend, with that major expense, because it's not there.
Thank you, Mayor. Andy had his hand up for a while. Andy?
Oh, yes, David, I just have a few points of clarification regarding some of the issues that uh based on the mayor's statement. Uh, let me deal with what I think the easy one first is this whole thing of not being able to feed kids. The program that is being cut, nobody likes cuts, don't get me wrong, but it is a COVID-era-related program that was encouraging communities to buy local. So it is a local food-for-schools cooperative agreement program. In FY twenty-five, the Farm Fresh program that is funded through this, Greenfield received only ten thousand four hundred ninety-seven dollars. So ten thousand four hundred ninety-seven dollars doesn't mean that we are not gonna feed kids. It is an encouragement to buy local. So I would say with with all due respect, I don't find that argument to be uh necessarily related to the funding issues that are being presented here tonight. And then regarding the special education, I would suggest that we all review the video from the public hearing in a minute. Mr. Messing acknowledged that in the local budget for special education tuition, he had included four contingencies for out-of-district placement. In addition to the OSD increase, the Operational Services Division increase is also factored in there. And then I also clarified that regarding the circuit breaker, for now, even though there's a balance as you're referring to, if you look at my memo from today's report, just under six hundred thousand dollars of that is already committed. And as I said at the public hearing, any balance that we have that is coming in as you're referring to as far as FY twenty-six, is already earmarked for FY twenty-seven. That is how it is that we budget for a circuit breaker, that every community in the Commonwealth does. So to say that it's inflated or incorrect, quite honestly, is disingenuous, and to some extent, quite honestly, for me, quite insulting.
I have a que- a question for Andy.
Go ahead, Member Martini, and then Mayor, if you wish to respond after Member Martini's question, an answer from Andy.
Thanks. So in your um budget update today, uh you had yeah, mentioned that there are two additional um out-of-district placements that we are now fiscally responsible for per uh the state, and I wanted to just have clarification, since um Mr. Messing included four contingencies uh in this for FY twenty-six, does that, would that now essentially mean that there are really two con- contingencies?
Uh, no, those would be in addition.
Those would be in addition to this. Okay, thank you for that.
Let's see, uh, I wanted to give the mayor a chance to respond, and then I'll come to Member Goodwin. I saw a member um that Mr. Messing um raised his hand as well.
Um, in response, uh, I just wanted to respond to Member Martini. Um I realize that all of the new positions um were not actually having to do with um moving people. I just want, again, to state where we are today. This is not like me against you. This is us trying to figure out how to how to do this effectively. I'm a member of the school committee, and I also happen to be the mayor, and I'm charged with putting forward a budget that we can afford. I want, I want you to remember that when I did this last year, only two or three months into being a mayor, I knew how much we could go up, and two-thirds of it went toward the schools, and we we added one new position. This year, a year later, there's two departments that have added a position in um and 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 possibly part-time at the library. It, they're really hard choices. You know, I'm on this phone call or on this meeting with you uh struggling at a time when we're all struggling. And Andy? Absolutely. I I don't know, um, I I didn't know what the amount for the federal funding was. I do know the economic reality that we are in absolutely this year. It is a hundred percent true that our health insurance is going up one and a half million. So that we, so we were able to do what we did last year. Um, we we we're three hundred thousand over on the health insurance this thus far this year. And then it's going up again. That's not made up. It's real, and it's a whole budget. You can go up two and a half percent plus whatever the new growth is. So what, you know, the position that we added last year in assessing, it was so that we could get the most new growth that we possibly could, so that the whole community could do better. Not the schools versus the city or anything. It's like, how many things can we afford as a as a community? We need another person in IT like you read about. The library is waiting us for us to do things, like lighting up their sign and um and uh doing the Forbes, because I have three people for a community of eighteen thousand. And when you guys were having trouble, we helped. Like, and that's what we have to do. It's together. But I can't, unless I start, you know, like making a mint in the, in our downstairs, I can't make this. And I got on, and I said, I'm gonna put myself out there. I'm gonna be on a meeting with everyone where I'm actually saying this and and be trying to answer all these questions in live time, which, as you probably all know, isn't really my best thing. But I'm trying, because we have to figure this out. Do do I have, like, every idea about, did I, did I think of everything of what we could possibly do for every energy thing with the MSBA? No, I didn't, because, you know, I've asked my own staff. The one thing that I really need is is if you could just add a couple of hours to each day, 'cause I think like Karen, we go from dawn to dusk, and I'm seventy-three. I was up till three-thirty last night, and I'm sorry, everyone, that I didn't get this paper to you last night, today, so that you could read it, 'cause I finished it at three-thirty. You know, because I was trying to make sure that everything was factually accurate and polite at the same time. And I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't get it to you, but that's when I finished it, and then um I brought it in today, and I had two people helping me with it, and um I think I finished it around four o'clock and then went for a walk, and so it didn't get to you. And I agree with each one of you. I can't do just anything when it's just um, when it's just read to me. And so I appreciate that. And I I will get it to you, but I've done my very best with this, and it's a nightmare of a position to be in when they're telling, you know, what the bond rating will do to to affect us, because the borrowings are so high. I walked into all of that, and I I walked in gathering everybody together, all the um union heads, and said, look, you know, we need to do something different because we do an eighty-twenty share on the insurance, which means that the city takes eighty percent of that. Um, but I certainly could understand why anybody wouldn't go for a different ratio in this economy where eggs are ten dollars a dozen. Yikes! It's awful, but there's some economic realities there, and when you're asking me, do I know how the savings would be? I don't know exactly. I don't know exactly, but I do know the numbers, and I know that they have decreased dramatically. And we need to look at how we do things, and I was just trying to save us from making something where we hired new, where we we hired some new people, those people with faces and families that we'd all grow to love, just like we do each other. So I'm trying to get us to the next stage and do it responsibly. And to talk to you about it, I think other mayors have just said what the number's gonna be. This was a really hard year, and next year's not gonna be better. And we are, we're teammates. We have to allow talking and listening and new ideas, and we may have to move some things very quickly. Like we're running an emergency room, and all of a sudden, there's a, there's a mass cash casualty incident. And you respond quickly. That's what's happening now. There's two things at once, incredibly spiraling costs with other ones on the horizon and a huge dip in enrollment. And do, do I have every factor of that finished out and known to you? I certainly don't. Because I am just one human being trying to do the very best job being a mayor of a city with a whole lot of issues, but a whole lot of fabulous people. Many of you who've stepped up to the plate to serve on a school committee month after month for what, eighteen hundred dollars the time you put in? Thank you. It's incredible, but we have to figure this out, 'cause it's just us. That's all.
Thank you, Mayor. Member Goodwin?
So, you know, you hear the sadness and you hear the anger, but I guess I think the most important thing is somebody who is, you know, been part of schools for over forty years um and watched Greenfield School Committee meetings for at least thirty. Um, I can remember meetings where bankruptcy was discussed in Greenfield, and schools were closed all over this town. There are some adults who are probably in their thirties and forties who didn't know what school they were going to until the day before school started. But I think the most important thing is But I think the most important thing is we're not alone. Everybody around us is going through this. Every time I read the newspaper, another superintendent is facing cuts. Nobody could plan for health insurance costs. And I, we're, nobody can plan for that. Nobody can, I mean, what's happening in our country right now, nobody, everybody wakes up wondering, what is the next thing that is going to happen? Because that is really where we're at. I think this is gonna be a lot of conversations to figure out next steps. I sat on the Star Committee every Thursday afternoon for over a year when Superintendent Harper was here. And we moved the 4th grade back to the elementary schools. Karen was getting furniture at the high school, and I got some chairs from her for 4th grade. Still, we believe in putting, you know, 5th grade back at the elementary school. But you've got declining enrollments. You've got outstanding costs that were not expected. As somebody who voted for a brand-new high school, we're still paying over $1 million every year on that, on that building. I think there is a different way. And I don't think tonight is the night we're going to find that way. It may take us two years. But I think everybody has great ideas. But we're not alone. Every district around us. I read something in the newspaper. Pioneer was talking about putting every single grade in their high school. People are talking about regionalizing. People are talking about all different ways just to keep education alive. And by fighting and getting angry with each other, we're not gonna come up with solutions. We're not alone. We're in this together. And I hope, you know, and maybe it's a two-year plan, knowing that next year's going to be worse. Maybe we raise chickens and sell eggs as a fundraiser. I don't know. But I'm just, the reality of this is not about... The mayor has nine grandchildren. If she could give you all the money in the world, she would. She values children, and that's, you know, one of the reasons that I know I voted for her. And so, I would sit here and say to you, I've fought for school budgets for my whole career. And bottom line is, there isn't some unlimited funds. You know, I built a brand-new middle school in South Hadley, and then the next budget cycle, I was told to cut 22 teachers, because the district didn't have the money. So, all this anger and all this sadness is real. And it happens a lot in schools who make, who... The amount of time that a superintendent makes a budget is enough to have nightmares. And a mayor who's faced with a city that seems to have liked to borrow money and build a lot of new buildings, from a library to a fire department to parking garages that nobody parks in, we're sort of, I would just say to you, Greenfield is the second-highest taxed city in Massachusetts. That is a fact. And bottom line is, our taxes, every time I see a tax bill, I start to shake. So, bottom line is, there isn't extra money laying around. I don't believe it's hidden at City Hall, buried in the dungeons. I think we're just going to have to... And I don't know what it's gonna look like. Karen's gonna have to, as superintendent, figure out how she wants to handle that number. It's really something... But the big thing to remember is, we're not alone. Everybody around us is doing this. Every time I pick up a newspaper, it's another school district, you know, facing budget cuts. And so far, our number is actually the biggest one I've seen in the newspaper. And, you know, so that 1.4 million, I wrote it down, for healthcare. I mean, that is a benefit that every educator gets. The fact that we're still paying for the high school. I don't know what other buildings we're still paying for. But we're in this together. And I guess I just would like, you know, I hear a lot of anger and a lot of sadness, and yes. But it's not about what's happening here. It's what's happening to us. It's bigger than us. I really believe that. I stopped watching the news, because it started to make me very upset. So I would just say to you, we're in this together. We're in this, and we live in Greenfield. And no other department is getting, like, big money. We're not, you know, looking at that. I know the fire chief needs a fire truck, or all our house insurance is going up. So that's a $1.35 million. And I want him to get his truck, because I'm not sure I can handle an increase in my house insurance. So, as citizens of Greenfield, we have to pay attention to what's happening in our city. So, anybody who's listening, I think you need to watch all the meetings to see all of the costs that take to run our town and to fix our potholes someday, I hope. So, just remember, we're not alone. And I think the big thing is, we need to do this together.
Any other questions or comments from members? I have some things. Mayor, you kind of used the emergency room metaphor to say where this is like a real fiscal emergency that we're in. And I agree, you can't have health insurance costs go up that much and not be in a really tight spot. Have you considered using free cash or stabilization for this difficult financial time we find ourselves in?
Well, we have a, I'm not really sure what I can say about this right now. But we had, you know, we had significant, significant expense for the settlement. I think I could say that. And that leaves us with $135,000 in free cash until June 30th. So I'm keeping that for, you know, well, you know, the stairs and the ramp to City Hall just collapsed. Collapsed, so I'm keeping that for things like that, to see what the bill for that is. So, it would be unwise to be, to be spending that. On stabilization, Glenn, you know, I can't, I would not use stabilization for healthcare costs, because I put the bond rating, the bond rating information in my, in what I had to say, because the bond rating makes things worse. If your bond rating goes down, then, you know, everything that you've borrowed for or are going to borrow for goes up. So the Bond Council, whom I've just had the pleasure of meeting, they all review what you have in things. So it would be just unwise for us to use that. You use the stabilization for, I don't know. You even try to say that if there's something like Hurricane Irene comes along, you try to save that for just... I mean, the health insurance, it could be up a million next year. So you wipe out half your stabilization if you use that for this year, you know what I'm saying? And then a bond rating could go down. So, I actually do try to think of every different thing. Not that I think of all of them, and I am welcome suggestions, but I run it by somebody, you know, I run it by our Chief Financial Officer and others to make the best decisions. But almost everybody says, "You leave that stabilization at its ease", and free cash with, you know, I think, there might be a financial order out for that settlement thing. So you'll see that next month. But that wipes out most of what is left in there. And again, I want to say, I'm not making a lot of friends this month, just so you know. You know, I had people that came forward with their capital requests. And some departments requested three or four things, and they didn't get anything. And then, you know, others had four requests and they got one. You know, the school department, we put that forward, and I'm sure that City Council will pass it for the fire panel, because that was a necessity. It's like these choices that you make, right? And if I had a magic wand, I'd create an extra couple of million. But I don't have that, but I don't believe I could take it out of stabilization. Did I answer your question, Glenn?
You did. Can you speak to what assumptions you're using in your budget in regard to state aid for this year?
Yes, I anticipate that we will get, I use the cherry-sheep number. So, it's a scary time. I've called MMA and Department of Revenue, but they both think that our cherry-sheep figures will come in as anticipated this year. So I put the number in, in the budget, that, you know, the first number's already out. I think you probably know that from being in your line of work. So, you know, you get the first number, then the House number and the Senate number. So, that's what we did last year. I'm assuming that we will get the same number on cherry-sheeps that we have. And I don't have that number in front of me. But it's similar to, or a little bit better actually than last year. So that's what I used for number.
Yeah, it looks like a 780K net positive.
Yeah, so we put that in. And I do want to say, because actually, because I got a text from my wonderful Chief of Staff, on the health insurance cost, when somebody asked me if this was a surprise. I might have known for like five, oh, five weeks, because I did say something to Karen within, but I'm not really sure whether it was a few weeks. But we did not get the last number. I kept thinking it couldn't possibly happen again. I did not get the last number until two days ago, but I was pretty sure, probably within the last 10 days, that it was gonna be, that it was gonna be, you know, somewhere between 16% and 17%. So I just wanted to make sure that I spoke that clearly.
Thank you. I just have some comments I'd like to make, and then I'd love to hear your responses, Mayor. But I think that this budget that you're putting forward is an absolute catastrophe for our students. It will represent, I think, dozens of positions being lost in our schools. I appreciate you very much for asking to be put on the agenda and for at least getting us the, getting the superintendent the number in advance as of yesterday and confirming it today. It, so that, kudos to you. Because the way this process works, you could have just put forward the number to the City Council on April 1st, and then we would only have a few weeks to yell and scream about it. Now we have many more weeks to be very upset. Because we're, if we are concerned, if you're noticing declines in enrollment now, this number is going to accelerate that like you would not believe. Families will be fleeing from this district. And it, where we already have several schools in turnaround, I think the state will see this number as a signal that Greenfield isn't really not taking the education of our students seriously and would actually put us at risk of being put into something like receivership. I mean, the number, the numbers that Kate was talking about, Member Martini was referring to, you know, the dozens of students that have been helped to actually graduate because of the program that the superintendent proposed, continuing to fund. Imagine our graduation numbers going down that dramatically. What's that gonna look like for Greenfield? It's, I mean, it's, it's just, we would not be having an ethical budget for our students if the number is anywhere near the number that you're putting forward tonight. You, you know, you asked all of the departments to keep a certain percentage in mind for salary increases and budget negotiations. That itself would obviously represent an increase in our budget. So you asked us to negotiate on that and then come forward with something that's less than the dollar amount we're actually using this year. And I understand the position you're talking about with the insurance costs going up. It's very hard to look at it at the school number without seeing the rest of your budget. So, it's very hard to see. I certainly hope that other departments will be complaining just as loudly as many people will be complaining to you in the coming weeks, because it would have to really be a true fiscal emergency with all of our city services being cut. While I do appreciate your transparency with the number and sharing your perspective with us tonight and giving us a chance to talk to you about it, there are a number of items in your statement that I personally felt very offended by. I felt offended that you felt that you could kind of suggest that just by rearranging the schools in some other way, that we could save so much money. That, I mean, I just, I don't see how you could possibly responsibly include that as a suggestion. How could you possibly consider that we would be able to re-district everything in terms of September, if you have been paying attention at all to what it takes to re-district a school system? So, it just seemed, it sort of felt like, oh, with the vans that we purchased without going through the capital process, that were vans that were needed and that were done in consultation to make sure they were up to the green standards of the city. It just felt like you're kind of adding a little laundry list of complaints that you've accumulated about the school's budgeting process. And it does not really feel responsible to me to kind of make suggestions that by doing things with closing down a middle school, you know, in less than six months' time, it just, you know, I appreciate that you have to try to find some, work with us to try to find some ways to mitigate the negative impact of the number you put forward. But it, to me personally, came across as, I felt offended by it, because there was just kind of so little thought put into it and not enough conversations to find out, or even a review of what has already been presented in terms of the special education numbers and things like that, where our business manager and our superintendent and our student services director worked so hard to put forward a thoughtful presentation. It seems like it was kind of ignored. So, that was difficult for me. And I think that, you know, we will have to see what this looks like in the context of your broader budget. But I would encourage everybody on this committee and everyone at home and all the educators to speak up very loudly and to insist that we have to find something else, some other solution to the city's fiscal problems, because this is basically punching our own students in the gut. And we can't do that. We cannot allow that to happen. So, Mayor, would you like to respond to my thoughts?
Well, yes, I would. So, I would like to say that I take offense at your remarks, Glenn. I heard other people say things like they were very sad or they were very worried. But I feel like yours were more offensive, by far. Irresponsible and so little thought were things that I wrote down. And I would just, you don't have to agree with me, but that's not gonna help going forward. There was, I'm a very responsible person. I'm responsible for an entire city. And we're a committee, we're teammates, and how we talk to each other actually matters. Now, we don't have to agree with each other. Thank God we still live in America, so we can all speak. What I tried to say while making two, while making a significant cut to ask, was to say what I thought that we could do, because I think it offers some hope for the future. It, in my opinion, it would be very irresponsible to not speak. to not speak about what I see might need to be done to save us, because I'm looking at the future of the city and the future of the city's budget. And I could just see where making one of these changes might be something that we couldn't go back from. And I offered thoughts on where we could save, because when you're doing something, you try to offer hope in a way that you could look at this in the best light of what we couldn't do to give all of, to give all or as much as we could in services to every single special student that we have here. And so it was actually thoughtful and not irresponsible. How can you save? I mean, this is, this is, if you're having, if you don't have enough money for something, you can look at two things. How you save money or how you make it. And that's what I've done since I've been in there. How could I make more money for our budget? I put somebody in assessing so we could make some new growth, so that there would be more, so that when people were asking for new positions, it could happen. And then I made suggestions in this, which in light of, which in light of current events, appeared very thoughtful. They were, some of them were energy savings, but most of them were based on the fact that we had two things that we did not plan on. Spiraling costs that happened very fast, that I did not know about until February. And declining enrollment. And what could we do to save? And it, and to work together for a solution is not going to involve name-calling. It's going to be what could we do that was the best thing. And so I'm just going to leave it at that. And I like, look forward to working with the rest of the committee.
Member Childs?
So how do we go about scheduling a special committee meeting to talk about this? Because I think we've reached as much productive discussion on the topic as we're going to tonight without talking in circles.
How's Monday at 6:30 PM? I should break it over. It is.
We can have green beer at the meeting, right? I didn't say that, right?
Green brew beer.
I'm available. I'm available on March 17th. I'd, I'd also, Glenn, could I just say one thing? There hasn't been any name-calling. Saying that you feel a certain way about something is not calling somebody a name. Saying that you have a feeling about what's happening is not calling someone a name. So I really appreciate your comments, Glenn, and I think that what you said was really important and insightful and thoughtful. And in the future, I really hope that these sort of things can be handled at a special meeting ahead of time, where we could have these materials to digest so that we can be ready to have these kinds of conversations.
So I'll work on the date, but basically, I, I, I'm not hearing any objection from anyone on the committee that we need a special meeting, so I think that will happen. Okay, 7:00 PM? Oh, Member Martini? Member Martini, do you have your hand up? Okay.
Sorry about that, can you hear me?
I can now, yeah.
Okay, so I agree with Member Denise, I did not hear any name-calling. So let's not go there. I did hear dismay and concern about the probable impact of a massive cut like this. I wanted to say in response to the mayor, I, again, I appreciate the pressures that you're under. You must be extremely worried. I also want to say the school committee is used to being, having the school department budget be underfunded. That literally happens every year. And the, the school department absorbs cuts to the, our proposed budget every year. But that's not what this is. This, this is less than 0%, is what you're suggesting. This is not even level funding, which would be draconian in the extreme evidence. So I, I think that people are right to be extraordinarily concerned about this proposal. And I am dissatisfied with hearing that you don't know specific numbers and other essential details for your proposal. I really do understand that you work hard around the clock. Probably the mayor and the Superintendent are the busiest people I know. And all the same, I expect the mayor's office to be prepared with information like this so that people are not blindsided and scrambling to try to figure out murky statement like this. So I'm available for the suggested date and time for a special meeting. I would just like to request a copy of the mayor's statement from this evening. And I would also like to request that the mayor provide in advance as much specific information to back it up as possible so that members have time to digest it. Thank you.
Okay. It is past 8:30. You promised a five-minute break, so we will take a five-minute break. And I don't know, I'll give you seven minutes, so when that clock turns to 9:55, we'll resume. All right, we are back from our break. There is a suggestion given the hour to ask the Assistant Superintendent and the Superintendent if you would like to maybe just make a few brief comments, and we can read your reports. Or up to you whether you would like to do your full report or just make a few highlights.
I'm happy to cover the highlights.
Great.
I think they're all highlights, that's why I put them in there.
Okay, fair enough.
No, but I appreciate the offer. So last week was Read Across America Week. We had a number of events in the schools. We had Bingo for Books at the elementary schools. We had a local author visit. And we had some celebrity readers to read to some of our students over the course of the week. So another great opportunity to promote our district priority around literacy. We have some upcoming events that our Title I program is either sponsoring or collaborating. We have the first cardboard challenge. It's this Saturday at Federal Street from 11:00 to 1:00. And that is open to all GPS students, but it will be hosted at Federal Street. Tomorrow night is a snack night at GMS. So in terms, we talked a little bit last month about the district report card. I did include that again this month. It is publicly available. It is full disclosure data that we've had available to us for some time. But, you know, we recognize that we may lag behind the state in certain areas. You know, we have two schools in turnaround. And, but in certain places like Mass Core Completion, yes, we're 19 points below the state, but that's also a 14%, 14% increase from the prior year. You know, it's kind of bounced up and down the past few years. So the data is helpful for us to look at, but just really a few of the data points that we do look at in our decision-making. Some grant updates. We have pursued a civics teaching and learning grant recently, a career corrected, career-connected learning program grant that we believe would supplement the innovation career pathway that we're pursuing with additional equipment. We submitted the investigating history grant in mid-February. And just want to mention that we were thrilled to have our first Acceleration Academy over the February break. We hosted it at Discovery School. There were 19 students from grades one through four across the district who attended. I think all but one or two students had perfect attendance, and the feedback was really positive from all the students and staff who attended. Huge thank you to Rachel Soder, Tammy Campbell, Amy Podolsky, and Brittany Tuttle for leading the way and taking the chance and being part of the first GPS Acceleration Academy team. And we already have positions posted for our April Acceleration Academy. We've talked a little bit about programming, our core and past diagnostic assessments in terms of we're providing professional learning for our staff and how those could be additional tools in the toolkit that they have. We have professional learning coming up on March 21st for GHS. And this past week, the Superintendent, along with myself and other members of the district leadership team, attended an instructional prioritization institute with DESI, where we began planning our district priority. Bill, I would say not planning our district priority for next year, but building off the work we've done this year to continue that work in the '25, '26 school year. And you have some photos there below. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent.
I do want to highlight that AEL and kindergarten registration is ongoing and upcoming. We have an AEL open house on Thursday, March 20th, from 5:00 to 6:30. You can contact the Academy of Early Learning to schedule a slot if you are interested in your three or four or potentially soon-to-be five-year-old going, if your five-year-old turns five before September 1st, though. We really strongly encourage folks to register their kindergarteners. Central office is open daily from 8:00 to 4:30 for kindergarten registration. And then each elementary school is going to host an evening in April. Each Thursday of the month will be a different elementary school for families to visit and register their kindergartner. And if you have any questions, you can contact my office. I do want to just talk quickly about enrollment and some of the comments made tonight. And I want to remind folks that a lack of enrollment doesn't happen just in a grade level. And I think that's one of the misconceptions, that a decrease in students allows either for the collapsing of a certain grade section or the ability to kind of put everyone where everyone thinks they should be. So we've only had a decrease in one student since February, and that student was sent out of district because our programming could not sustain the child's needs, and we had to service that child. But enrollment is very intricate, and we look at class sizes and trying to keep class sizes at an optimal size. And that is something that takes a lot of thoughtful planning. And with all due respect, this is the first time I've been hearing about the potential collapse of Greenfield Middle School and the amount of time and effort for the last three years that we've put into the redistricting already. That is not something I can foresee happening by September. And while I'm absolutely going to be part of the solution so that we can do what we can that's best for kids, that is going to take a lot more thought. When we did the original redistricting, we were very clear that the elementary schools could only house K through five. They do not have the space for additional sections. So that is something just to keep in mind before our Monday meeting, and we will be working on that internally with regards to the thoughts that were brought up tonight. But that is definitely a space issue. I also want to just comment that the required cuts right now are almost at 1.9 million to our budget. And regardless of how many administrators folks think we should cut and could be cut, we will never meet 1.9 without cutting staff and potentially cutting more programs that our students deserve. So there's a lot of work to be done, and it's not that I'm not willing to do it, but I want to be really clear about some realities that were revealed this evening. Lastly, I just want to add that we had a DESI site visit on Friday. The Associate Commissioner, Charmaine Curry, came, looked at all of our high school classes, and it is a school in turnaround, and focused on our district instructional priorities. And after the site visit, debriefed with the principal, the Assistant Superintendent, and myself, and in conversations, asked us why our coaches couldn't tackle some of this work or why our department heads couldn't tackle some of this work. And we jokingly just gave her a chuckle and said, "We do not have those positions." And then she went on to consider, you know, other avenues that we could use to do this work. And in the end, the people that do the work that we are required to do under the state are our administrative team. And we have a lot of work that is being done behind the scenes with many different DESI departments. And that is not happening without lead administrators in buildings. So we were thankful for her feedback and her site visit on Friday. But one of the real takeaways is our instructional priorities are the root that we have to continue working on. And that's going to continue to be costly for this district to get our students to schools that are not in turnaround. And the rest you can, I presume, read about. Oh, the other highlight, I should say, though, is we have started the search for Newton Elementary Principal. Interviews begin next week, and we are very excited about that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for the Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent? Hearing none, thank you very much. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there any member who'd like to remove any item from the consent agenda? I'd like to hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Member Childs.
Second.
Second by Member Goodwin. Any discussion? Secretary Denise, will you call the vote?
Hold on a second. Second was Goodwin. Member Goodwin?
Yes.
Member Childs?
Yes.
Secretary Denise, am I yes? Chair Jones and Mossad?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sexton?
Yes.
Mayor Disorga?
Yes.
Member Martini?
I'm not hearing you, Member Martini. Okay, mark her down as abstaining, I guess.
So that passes with one abstention?
Thank you. Move on to school committee reports. Just briefly, the executive subcommittee met and started looking at mentoring of the Vice Chair and preparing the Vice Chair for potentially being voted on as Chair next year, and also looked at how to kind of systematize and document some of the, some of the tasks that the Chair performs. Member Denise, the Legislative Representative, mask?
I don't feel like I should have to read this whole thing because it's so late, but I will if you want me to. But you can read it in your packet. So I'll do the highlights. On February 27th, Member Martini, Vice Chair Sexton, and I engaged in a Zoom meeting with our Division Five Chair, Humira Fassudin, and the MASC President, Jason Frazier, and a number of other school committee members from districts in our division. We were given a list of current bills to advocate for, and Member Martini and I read them and split the homework. We are bringing forward these bills to the full committee tonight for your approval as points of advocacy as we converse with our legislators for our Day on the Hill activities, which is May 6th this year. There are four bills on the page. I can read them, or we can just take a moment to look at them. My goal is to make a motion that we look at these bills and approve the advocacy point so that when we go to the Day on the Hill, we can say with authority that the Greenfield School Committee approves this advocacy. Would you like me to read them, or could we just take a second to look?
I think we can just take a second to look.
Great.
And I'd like to hear a motion to approve the points of advocacy as presented for conversation with legislatures and for legislators and for our Day on the Hill activities.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Did you get that, Susan Farber? Thank you. All right, with no discussion, Secretary Denis, will you call the vote?
Sure. Member Goodwin?
Yes.
Member Childs?
Yes.
Secretary Denis, I'm a yes. Chair Johnson Mossad?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sexton?
Yes.
Member Martini? And Mayor Disorga?
Yes.
Okay. All approved with Member Martini abstaining.
Thank you very much for your attendance at that meeting and your work on this and getting us better prepared than ever for our Day on the Hill. We'll move on to old business and the business manager position. Superintendent?
We had a handful of candidates who applied for the position. We are still in discussions with one candidate and should have updates within two weeks or so.
Given that we will need to start, we need to basically contingency plan in the event that the final candidate doesn't work out for one reason or another. So I've prepared a motion for us to consider. And I'll just make the motion myself. I move that this school committee authorize the Superintendent to initiate the procurement process for a consultant to support the business manager role in case the current business manager search is unsuccessful. This authorization allows the Superintendent to take necessary steps to secure consulting services in accordance with applicable procurement laws and regulations. Is there a second? Great. I can speak a little bit more to this. Essentially, we don't know for sure if the final candidate will end up signing with us. If they don't, it's probably too late at our next regular meeting for the, for us to vote to authorize the Superintendent to begin the procurement process for business manager services by contract. So essentially, if we do not, and if that search is unsuccessful, then we could be in a position of not having a business manager July one at all, which would be not a good Any discussion or questions? Member Denis?
What is it, what is the process to do a second round of searching with that? We would be locked into whatever services we found, and then after the contract, we'd go again? Is that what you're saying, I guess?
Yeah, I'm saying if, if, I mean, I suppose the other option is you could initiate another search for a business manager and try to hire, but there's a great possibility that that would be unsuccessful, and in the meantime, you haven't started the procurement process to try to get a contractor in place for July one. So that contract, you know, probably the minimum we would want to do would be two years for, to go through the whole procurement process and find someone and the time that it takes and all that stuff. You don't really have someone even onboard for very long if you do less than two years. So, yeah.
I hear you. I'm just thinking because so many districts, so many chairs of different school committees told me that they've found people on their second go-around. So I was just wondering what that looks like.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess.
Could we continue searching up until the point of contract ending and having to renew or find somebody new? I mean, can we overlap procurement and searching?
Superintendent?
That's a great question.
We'd have to look into that. I don't know the answer to that, if you can do both.
Member Childs?
So what is the timeframe for procurement and our legal obligations?
Well, basically, in order to get, you know, so the school department would have to either go through the city or contract with some other group to do the procurement because our current business manager would have a conflict of interest. So that involves basically developing a detailed scope of services, putting it out. There are certain timelines for notification that have to happen, like it has to be listed on certain places, and, and then you wait to get the responses. Then it has to go through a scoring process and so on. So that's why essentially the Superintendent is saying, can't wait until the March meeting to initiate that procurement process. If we want to have a contractor in place for July one, that process would really need to start within, you know, in two weeks or so, given all the things that need to happen in between. Yes, Member Childs, and then I'll go to the Mayor.
So what happens if we don't have someone in place July one? How big of a problem, how big of a crisis is it?
Superintendent, can you lay out what it would look like to try to run the school department without a business manager?
I don't know the answer to that. I've never run a school department without a business manager, but that is our rollover of everything. So from payroll to, you know, everything in between. So I can't imagine trying to run the district without a business manager July one. I don't know. Yeah, I mean, end-of-the-year reporting, you know, there's just so many things. So we certainly don't want to be without one.
So we're gathering together on Monday. Could, could we push this vote off on Monday so we all have a little more time to think about it?
Yes, I think we can. Mayor, Member Denis?
Could we find, Karen, could we find the answer to that question about a procurement overlapping thing for Monday? Oh, thank you.
Mayor?
And could we, would we have a defined budget on this? Or could we ask for a defined budget on this?
Defined budget, you mean like?
Defined budget, number, that we would be putting towards a contract?
Yeah, I think we can have an estimate for you of, you know, we have an estimate of what the, the staff person would cost and what the contract, contracted person might cost.
Thank you.
Am I on base with that, Superintendent? There, we should be able to have some rough ballpark for people on those questions?
I presume so, but I'm just thinking that you put a range when you do a bid, and then they come in with their bid for their services. So I'm not sure if I will have an actual cost, but I'm sure there will be a range.
Yeah, it's a bit of a chicken-and-the-egg thing because part of the procurement process would be establishing what that range is by whoever did the kind of like official procurement, which involves a little research. But we certainly have a picture of what we are putting in the budget for this staff person and what we're currently paying for contracted business manager services, so. Okay, Member Childs?
So do we need a motion to table this until Monday?
Sure.
So then I move that we table the business manager procurement issue until Monday.
Second.
All right. And I think it's the tabling the motion, so the motion still stands, but, okay, you accept that as a friendly amendment? Okay. Any discussion?
It's non-debatable.
Oh, okay, thank you, Mayor. So Secretary Denis, will you call the vote, please?
Yes, Member Goodwin?
Yes.
Member Childs?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Chair Johnson Mossad?
No.
Vice Chair Sexton?
Yes.
Member Martini, are you here? Okay, so it passed. Oh, I'm so sorry, Mayor Disorga?
Yes.
Okay, so it passes with one no and one abstention.
Onto, where are we now? So we're on to Policies BDE and Policy BDF. This was something we, I had brought to you draft before, and I believe I've incorporated the committee's feedback. The committee's feedback was essentially, please don't make this process go through the policy subcommittee. Some members said, just present us with something as Chair. Other members said it should, the subcommittee itself should get to provide feedback on its charge. I think that what I put forward allows essentially for both. It has the Chair putting forward the descriptions for both the subcommittees and advisory committees for approval by the full school committee. The school committee could certainly, at that point, if they didn't like the descriptions, charge an ad hoc committee with returning with different language, or make any changes they wish to at the meeting itself. So, and certainly once the subcommittee is up and running, they certainly have the opportunity to put forward or request for an increased or changed scope of, of work. So I'd like to, the other, the other change that I made was Policy BDE, subcommittees of the school committee, it talks about having the subcommittee descriptions or subcommittees put forward at the organizational meeting. However, since it's the Chair that needs to assign, put forward, I'll be back.
We're hearing on Zoom that John Donis deleted and there's a video.
Okay. Mayor, can you hear us?
Yes.
I'm assuming the video is up and running, and whoever is having a hard time hearing us must be, the technical problem must be on their end because some are able to hear us. So, so the other change that I made to BDE was that the original one talked about having the subcommittee assignments being presented at the organizational meeting, but since the Chair presents the subcommittee assignments and the Chair is only appointed at the organizational meeting, it seemed to make sense that the Chair should put them forward at the first meeting of the calendar year, the regular meeting, which has kind of been our past practice. So that's the other change. So I'd like to hear a motion to approve these policies as presented.
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
So I heard a motion from, let's say, from the Mayor, and then a second from Member Goodwin. Any discussion? Susan Farber?
Would you like to make the motion more specific than these policies?
Oh, sure. The motion to approve Policy BDE, subcommittees of the school committee, and Policy BDF, advisory committees of the school committee as presented. All right. And any objection to the people who made the motions for that friendly amendment from our attentive recording secretary? Okay. Any discussion? Secretary Denis, will you call the vote?
Member Goodwin?
Yes.
Member Childs?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Chair Johnson Mossad?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sexton?
Yes.
Mayor Disorga?
Yes.
And Member Martini, still absent?
Yep.
All right, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Let's see, we've already talked about Day on the Hill and had the Mayor's presentation. So I would like to hear a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Subsection Twenty-One, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and seven to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grants and aid requirements. The committee will not return to open session.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion from Member Denis and a second from Member Goodwin. Any discussion? Secretary Denis, will you call the vote?
Member Goodwin?
Yes.
Member Childs?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Chair Johnson Mossad?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sexton?
Sorry, I'm a yes.
Mayor Disorga?
Yes.
And Member Martini, still absent? Okay, approved.
Members should watch their email for an invitation to the executive session. It's a Google Meet, and now we need to do a vote to adjourn the regular session. Is there a motion to adjourn the regular meeting?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Motion from Member Goodwin, a second from Member Childs. When you're ready, Secretary Denis?
Again. Member Goodwin?
Yes.
Member Childs?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Chair?
Yes.
Vice Chair?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Kate Martini?